Thank you all very much for coming today. I think this is going to be a good discussion and kind of important for the town of Arlington. My name is Keith Squires, in case I don't know some people that don't know me. Chair of the Select Board. Shortly you're going to hear an announcement by Mr. Jim Baker. He's an Arlington resident. He was Director of Vermont State Police, presently Director with the International Association Chief of Police in Washington. So, we've got a good guy helping us out here. That's the bottom line of that whole thing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie Bryant. She's got a few words to say for us.
Thank you, Keith. I'm both thrilled and honored to be here today and a part of this important announcement. I grew up in Arlington. I'm a graduate of AMHS, and it is here where my husband and I have raised our two children, Riley, a recent graduate and who is freshman at Green Mountain College with the ambitions of returning to Arlington to be an elementary school educator and coach, and the other, Jackson, a junior in this very school. I'm employed as the Senior Director of Development at the Baton Hill Valley Health Center right in the heart of Arlington, which recently underwent a $2 million renovation and serves over 2,600 patients. Those are our friends, our family, and our community. What you will hear shortly is important to me, my family, and my peers because it addresses the future of my hometown, a place I love dearly. I'm eager to see how I can help, and I hope that you are all motivated to be involved too. At this time, I'd like to introduce my former classmate, Peter Adey.
Just like Kate, I'm thrilled to be here. I left Arlington in 1996. After graduating AMHS, I joined the long gray line attending West Point and served as an Army officer. In intervening years, my wife and I, Terri, have always held a fond place in our heart for this town. And as of last April, we picked up stakes and packed up our five kids and moved back here. This is where we see our future. This is where we see the future of our children. And because of this, by extension, the future of this community is very important to us. And also why I'm very pleased to introduce Colonel Baker. You have a more detailed summary of Colonel Jim Baker's career in your press kit, but I'd like to give a brief summary of what you'll find there. In 2009, Colonel Baker retired as Director of the Vermont State Police after a career spanning 31 years. Starting as a trooper in Bennington County, he moved through the ranks: Station Commander, Field Supervisor of the Southern Vermont Drug Task Force, and in 2004 was promoted to Major and made Field Force Commander. Two years later, he was promoted to the position of Director. Following his retirement in 2009, Colonel Baker founded the JW Consulting Company and over the following six years was the interim head of the Vermont State Police Academy, Acting Chief of Police in Manchester, and in 2012, the Chief of Police in Rutland. In 2015, the Colonel accepted the position of Director of Law Enforcement Operations and Support with the Washington DC-based International Association of Chiefs of Police, where he's presently working. Colonel Baker is a recipient of numerous state and national awards for his work in law enforcement, including a very special one from his alma mater, Southern Vermont College, distinguished alumnus. Colonel Baker has served as an adjunct professor at several colleges and is a graduate of the 188th Session of the FBI National Academy at Quantico, Virginia, and continues to do work for that federal agency. Colonel Baker and his wife, Kim, have been residents of Arlington since 1981, where they have watched their children and many of our friends and grandchildren grow up. Please give a warm welcome to Colonel Baker.
Hey, good afternoon. What a beautiful day here in Arlington, huh? I woke up this morning and I was feeling rather young and, you know, my feet hit the floor and my bones weren't aching, and it was a beautiful day. Then I got here and I see Kate get up, and Kate speaks, and I remember Kate when Kate was this high and, you know, was hanging out at my house with Don and Vero Keelan's daughter, Elizabeth, and now I see the contributions Kate's given to her community. And then Peter, when he got up, I started feeling really old. Because I remember Peter, Peter may not remember this. I remember Peter when he was about that high with his sister, Betsy, that I coached on youth basketball, and he couldn't hit the rim. And now I'm starting, and he says he still can. I'm sitting here doing the math of just how old I am, and then he introduced my bio. And when I hear my bio, I often think of the Sisters of St. Joseph and all the rulers I had cracked across my hands as I was growing up and how scared those nuns would be if they knew I was standing here in front of you today. First, I want to thank all of you for being here. This is pretty overwhelming, but I'm not surprised. Don Keelan, myself, and Florence Velnack met earlier this morning to have a conversation about what I was saying. And Don asked me the question about how would I feel about what would success be today? And I said, "A room filled with people that really care about Arlington." And that's what's in front of me right now. And that's pretty, it's pretty enlightening and it's pretty, psychs me up in a big way. I want to thank Keith Squires for his introduction and in his role as Chair of the Select Board here in town. Keith and I have had a conversation about what the efforts are and where we think we can help take the town to a new level, and Keith's being very supportive. I also want to point out that Nicole Wallens here, the Chair of the School Board, and Nicole and I have had probably more conversations than Nicole wanted to have with me, but we've talked a lot about how can we unite citizens and bring them together to raise the quality of life, and Arlington should be very thankful for their service. So I want to just give a round of applause. I also want to point out there's other members of the School Board and Select Board here, and I want to thank them for coming. In January of this year, Mrs. Helen Jones was brutally murdered in her home here in Arlington. This was a wake-up call for the Arlington community, a tipping point for a quiet conversation that had been going on in Arlington for a period of time. For many of us, it was a crystallizing moment. The young man now incarcerated for Mrs. Jones homicide. If convicted of the charge, make no mistake, each and one, each and every one of us own a part of this tragedy. He was born here, went to school here, worked here in Arlington, and he was one of us, and our institutions were part of his life. Arlington is facing challenges, not unlike many rural communities in Vermont, and now from my experience in working in Washington across the country. Over the next several months, citizens of Arlington will be asked to join one of six committees that will be curated, created, and charged with strengthening the social fiber and the quality of life and the community well-being of Arlington. And I must say, in the surrounding area, we consider our neighbors our friends. The committees, working in conjunction with our state and local elected and appointed leaders, will focus on our schools, town government, the rec park, economic development, our local arts, history, and tourism, as well as public safety. Funding for this long-term effort will be coming from MAC Molding, the Keelan Family Foundation, donations, and public grants. Since last January, a small group of citizens have been discussing how to bring the shine back to Arlington. At that time, they approached me and asked me for my help. The first committee, the School Committee, better referred to as the Self Arlington School District Self Study Committee, came together after two days of meetings at MAC Headquarters this past July. Two members of the School Board, our two school principals, the district superintendent, parents, and other town residents, 22 in all, attended this two-day meeting. We discussed the school's mission, vision, core values, and strategic planning, along with the ramifications of Act 46-49. From this larger group, a smaller study committee was formed and appointed by the School Board to look at creative ways to strengthen our schools. At the meeting in July, this group created a shared vision, a statement, and I want to share that with you, if I can find it fairly with you. And I would refer to this as "our" shared vision for Arlington schools. And this is what the group came up with. We prepare our children for life. We nurture them individually and teach good citizenship by example. We demand accountability and the hard work that leads to achievement. We focus on resilience. We collaborate with parents, local business, and our community to create personalized pathways for student learning. With its rich history and natural setting, we make all of Arlington our campus. By graduation, each student can proudly say, "I became the best version, best version of myself." This statement is the starting point in Arlington and expresses what we strongly believe about our beloved town. The Arts, History, Tourism Committee is already in formation stages and is creating a vision to grow and support arts in Arlington, building on the long history of arts here in Arlington. The other committees will soon be formed within the next 60 days. It's no secret that many Arlington residents, it's no secret to many Arlington residents that Arlington, over the past 15 to 20 years, has changed. An aging population with our children flocking to larger cities, that's why it's significant that Peter and Kate are here today. A shrinking of small businesses, degradation in some properties, and a reduced sense of safety the town has had and lost many of its long-serving institution and businesses: the Catholic Church, the small businesses in East Arlington, Cullinan's, the IGA store, the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. Our school population has declined. Our population is aging, and working families have little time left for volunteering. This has affected our civic organizations, school population, and tourism. We have not promoted our town's significant history, especially in the arts or creative programs at such places as the rec park for our senior citizens and young people alike. A great loss in economic viability has occurred in East Arlington. Once a designation spot with a buzzing economy and tourist trade, we'd go off script for that. So when I was dating my wife many years ago, it was an annual trip for us to go to East Arlington in fall foliage to the Candle Mill and take in the beauty of what Arlington was, not knowing that years later I would live here, or even years later I would be standing here talking about the need to be better at promoting Arlington. As with many communities, we have areas of fiscal blight that once were beautiful homes and businesses. Some landlords are not town residents, and their lack of attention to their properties, fiscal appearance is evident and detrimental to our town's neighbors, visitors, and the town's grand list. My experience in the field of criminal justice and social sciences is that place matters and environment matters more. Our collective sense of loss was exasperated by the murder of Mrs. Jones and by the same social challenges facing all communities, including the challenges of mental health and the challenges of the opiate substance abuse crisis that we're in the middle of, not only in Vermont but in the United States as a whole. This includes the dire side effects on children. Arlington has the talent and resources to change this course. That is what this effort is about: strengthening our social fiber, building community resiliency, and changing the course. Arlington has much to offer to its residents, tourists, and employees. Steeped in history, it is the first capital of the state of Vermont, home to Ethan Allen and the Green Mountain Boys, home to Dorothy Cantfield Fisher, as well as National Illustrators Norman Rockwell, Gene Pelham, Meade Schaefer, Bud Egerton, Don Tracky, and John Hughes, collectively responsible for Saturday Evening Post illustrations. Arlington's physical location is one of the finest in Vermont, nestled under five mountain peaks of the Teconic Mountains bordered by the Green Mountain National Forest. And let's not forget the town's precious section of the Baton Hill, a world-famous trout and fishing and boating river. Our rec park is one of the town's jewels with its golf, tennis, swimming, walking trails, ball fields open to all. It also represents, when I talk about the fiber and the history of Arlington, about what it means, and my good friend, John Warner, is here today. It illustrates the history of Arlington and the importance of those who contribute when the field was named after John last year. Voluntarism has and continues to be a major strength of our town, with over 20 active boards executing their mission. Our small town is the home of MAC Molding, Vermont's sixth-largest employer in cutting-edge manufacturing as well as others, including Quadro Tech and HPH. To this, I would add, Arlington has two of the most famous and prestigious full-service historic inns: the Arlington Inn and the West Mountain Inn. In March of this year, I was asked to lead this effort. I am proud to do so. Since then, I have met with town leaders, including Keith and Nicole. These are hard-working public servants trying to make the right decisions every day for the betterment of the town in order for it to thrive and prosper. I'm leaving my executive position with the International Association of Chiefs of Police in January to help coordinate our town's wide effort. Like so many other residents, I have a vested interest in Arlington. Since 1981, my wife, Kim, and I have lived here, raised three children, and now are raising two grandchildren. In overseeing the work of the six committees, I'll be drawing on my background of having been the Colonel of the Vermont State Police and the Police Chief in Rutland, where we collectively helped create Project Vision. In 1761, as one of Vermont's first towns, folks came to Arlington to create a new life and establish their homes, farms, and shops. We want it to be just such a place today, where folks will come and work, raise their families, enjoy the same treasures that Dorothy Cantfield Fisher, Norman Rockwell, and so many others value. A century and a half later, we, the residents of Arlington, have an opportunity to restore the shine to Arlington. We, as a community, are committing to remaking ourselves, and we will do that with your help. Thank you for being here today, and I'm willing to answer any questions that anyone has. I got to tell you, this is a much friendlier crowd than I used to face when I first went to Rutland as a police officer. I used to have to have an escort in and out of meetings there. But by all means, fire away. Questions. Yes, K. John.
Jim, will you be using external resources to help with some of the committee work? And is there funding for that from some sources, either state or local?
At this time, there is no state funding, and I will draw on my experience in my role there in the state government days to leverage those resources. But I will say, this, K. John, that one of the things that I often talk about, Project Vision Rutland, that effort was done and still continues happening in Rutland without one iota of state funding, except for one small grant that was received from the Department of Corrections, which was already there when we got there. And I'll go back to what I said earlier. My experience in Rutland taught me that in every community, I was in Springfield, Vermont, last night on official business with IACP. We did an assessment with their police department, and I said this and I'll say it again: in every community, there is the resources to make the difference, and it's just a matter of marshalling those resources, and I think that's what we're going to try to do. I'm not saying it's not going to take some funding and resourcing. It will, but much of that's being done right now by the generosity of MAC Molding and the Keelan Lodge. Yes, I'll put it back.
Can you explain?
Cynthia, I didn't see you there, and I apologize. I did not call you well. I started up here.
That's all right.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Can you explain how the committees are being formed, or what's happening, or how people might participate? That may have been at the very beginning. I didn't come in at the very beginning, but I think it'd be worth discussing that.
It was not at the beginning, and so if anyone's interested in serving on any committees, reach out from Robin Wilcox at Town Hall. Robin's going to collect names. I will say this, I just, you know, because I'm about setting expectations and being clear about expectations, that I do not get back here in Arlington at that time until January. So much of this effort between Don, myself, and Florence has been done when I'm in town. So, the School Committee has been our focus. The arts are starting to take off as kind of an ad hoc group, as kind of forum. So, people should call if you're interested in serving, leave your name with Robin, and within the next 60 days, we'll be holding an organizational meeting. Yes, sir.
My name is Clint Dickens, and I own one of the inns that you didn't mention in uncover British Green.
So let me repeat that, that inn, Clint, is that historical piece of Norman Rockwell's history.
And I invite all of the community to come at any time and check out what we're doing there. It's become a beautiful property. I also am a school psychologist, have been for 30 years, and I'm very interested in participating in probably several committees. Is that, is that potential available? Are we going to be looking at, again, Cynthia, wondering about the structure of all that?
So, at some point, as I said to Don, Florence, I need to get to meet you, so I guess we're meeting now for the first time. We really see you as that group that you're working with out in West Arlington and the work that Dr. Josh Sherman's doing up in East Arlington. You see that as the ad hoc arts committee is starting to come alive. So, if we could chat afterwards, I would appreciate that. Thank you. And again, I apologize for the...
No, it's okay. It just kind of gives me an indication.
I'm going to get a free advertising, I get.
Chris. Jim, can you prioritize, knowing what you know now, what you might want to start swinging at first?
Again, I'm not, I'm not a social scientist. I'm just exposed to the social science through my career. Chris, I think the best way to answer that is getting people around the table is the first step. So if I draw on my stories in Rutland with Project Vision. Project Vision didn't start anywhere other than the opiate problem was killing the city. And it wasn't like, we didn't start by trying to tackle the opiate problem. We tried to attack it by taking an inventory of the assets to the city and what people were doing, and then collectively bringing them to the table. And then, by committee work, committees just took off. And the saying that we always had is we never once ever said to anyone who came to the table, "That's a bad idea." If you've got an idea and you think it works, run with it, and we'll support you. So, to answer that question, I think the place to start to swing at is getting these groups together collectively, start filling up some of that energy and synergy, and then start really focusing on the underlying issues that we know are driving some of the problems here. And I would say that you can't separate out the school from the current economic environment that we operate in, and I don't think you can have a viable school system without a viable economy. And you can't have a viable school system and a viable economy unless some people are participating in their government and participating in opportunities to make things better. So I know that's a long-winded answer, but that's the way I see it. Marianne, I knew I could tell from what I'm asking.
Thank you. Marianne Carlson, and I'm just asking, is there, has each group gotten a chair, and do they have kind of just a small idea of where they want to go?
We're not there yet. So really, only because when we started this conversation back in the spring, because of the pressures that were coming about as a result of '46 and '49, Act 46 and '49, we brought together a group on the school piece first, and it wasn't really meant to even be the committee, Marianne. It was brought, and as your daughter was there, it was really meant to be taking some inventory of what we valued about. So we did a SWOT analysis, right? Strength, weakness, and opportunities and threats, and out of that came the first committee. So, what we hope to do over the next 60 days is get those committees established, identify a chair, and start getting a framework put in place as to when they'll meet. And I'm hesitant to talk about what's in my head because it may not become reality, but eventually bringing those groups together shortly, within the next three to five months, and really start talking collectively about how we're working together. Okay? You're going to let me off? This is easy. Really? Yes. Yeah. Don's, I'm going to get fired already because Don, Don told me to look up Robin's phone number at Town Clerk's office and forgot to do it before I left the house, Don, so Don just gave it to me. So everybody knows the Town Clerk, right? 375-2332. Robin knows that, she'll be collecting names, and we'll pick those up and start contacting people shortly. Yes, Clark?
I'm sorry, I have one other question. You were saying three to five months, and it comes to my mind that that could be, we've got a momentum coming. And I would be very concerned in that period of time of losing that momentum. Are there things that we can do now to participate in to keep that kind of momentum going?
Yeah, when I say three to five months, I don't mean identify the groups in three to five months. I mean bring all the groups together once they're stood up and bring them together and start talking about the bigger picture of how we want to go. If I misspoke, you know, I wasn't clear. I apologize. Yes, Margaret.
Would an email signup list be helpful for a central communication?
It would be, and we've talked about that, and so we're kind of using Robin for right now until we can get some IT infrastructure underneath us. So here's my first challenge to the community: is there somebody out there that is better at technology than I? I often spend a lot of time cursing at my iPhone or handing it off to my granddaughters and figuring out why I can't get it to work. If there's someone out there that's at least a bit more talented than that, I'd love to talk to you afterwards about potentially setting up a webpage and a way to be able to communicate. Look, one of the things that we identified early on, and this is just ad hoc, sitting around talking, there's no central place to communicate here in town, right? And it isn't the Select Board's job, it's not the School Board's job, it's not the library's job. So there's no place to collectively have a conversation in the format that folks communicate in today, which is electronic. And so, we talked about that. If there's somebody out there, please speak to me afterwards, and I'll put your work. Nicole.
I was just offered that the school has put a lot of effort into creating the BDSU homepage as a landing spot for a lot of information related to the schools. And Bill is here, they've done a lot of work to make it easier to find and more accessible, and whatever the town ultimately creates, that could be a good link between what goes on in the school and what goes on in the community.
Right. These... Amy.
I'll put out, as the committees are forming, if anybody, if any committees need a place to meet and you want to come and meet at the inn, that is fine with me too. Just let me know when, if, you know, if people have a hard time getting, getting a place.
I'll go to Don, and based on his, he's got cameras and a couple other cameras, the only thing I ask you to be is, we announced this now because we feel like there was a lot of energy coming out of the work that the group did at the school. There's a lot of energy coming out of conversations that are happening sort of on the side. The only thing I ask you to be patient with me about is that I'm not back here, you know, I commute to Washington DC every week. I don't want you all to start crying or anything. My wife cries enough about it. So, getting ahold of me sometimes is challenging, just because I have a fairly large responsibility in the job I'm in now. And so, I just ask you to be patient over the next 30 to 60 days as I start that transition back from DC to home in full-time. So, Don, you got a question?
Going back to Rutland, Project Vision, prior to Project Vision was apathy an issue in Rutland, and is that, do you see a sense of that here? Is that one of the things we want to overcome with, when you refer to the shine, bringing back the shine to Arlington?
Yeah, it is not. And this is the best example I could use. When I first walked into the police department, I would hear officers refer to Rutland as "Rut Vegas." How many people have heard that term? And I banned it inside the police department, and here's the reason why I did it. It's a self-defeating statement. You act the way you talk. And one of Rutland's biggest challenges was they were down on themselves, and that's the apathy you're talking about. Oh, this will never change, this won't happen, you know, these burglaries just occur, you know, cars get broken into all the time, that's just the way it is here. You know, Officer Sol Sol acts a certain way, that's just because of who he is. That's the apathy, and I think, you know, I've had a little bit of experience of changing that apathy in my professional experience. And the first place it starts is the way you talk about yourself. And so I think there's nothing but positive... And so I think there's nothing but positive. If I thought that Arlington wasn't the place to be and live and hopefully eventually retire, I would have moved a long time ago, I could be living in Washington now. But it's the way you talk about yourself and the way you look at yourself, and that plays into conduct and sitting around having coffee at a coffee shop or at Wayside or at Stewart's and you start talking negative about the town, that's where the apathy comes from. And I think that's the first thing we need to change. I mean, the girls' soccer team right now is six and all, right? Where are they? Two goals scored against them so far this year. Todd, don't get mad at me, we're already first time. We love the boys' soccer team. Let me follow up on something I said earlier, because again, I know John's here, and Don Flo and I were talking about this this morning. John Warner represents what the history of this town is and the heroes of the town, going back to Norman Rockwell. And somehow, somewhere in the last few years, we've lost the ability to honor that kind of stuff, and that's the apathy, Don. And I think, I think that's what I'm going to focus on. Chris asked me what I'm going to focus on, no one will say anything negative about Arlington in front of me, because I'll call you out. And if we all did that, yeah, we all would. If we all did that, then no one would do that, right? Then no one's doing that. And again, small social experiment, to this day, I'd be shocked if you went along with P and heard anybody call Rutland "Rut Vegas." They call that the place where they provide public safety or honor to do it. So it's about the way you think about it. Bill?
Yeah, Jim, to keep the momentum going, and we do have some, you know, probably the people that know most, students about technology than people are each, so we'd be happy to kind of add some more on our webpage to get the groups going. I know that we have the Act 46 Study Committee up there right now, it's really nothing to add, a few more links. So just as a path right now, if you email Principal Stewart or Principal Lacoste or myself, those are the emails generally people have, we'll get something together, we'll paste up, we'll put it out on Twitter, and try to just organize that and maybe get some students involved in that that can...
You know, we're not quite there. And I owe you a read, though, we need to get together. I would also say that, based on that, I'll take the liberty of saying, the ideal situation for me on this, the way the community communicates, is that if I had a group of students that would work with me on that, that's the way you build that synergy and energy.
I do know the student body very well, and we'd be happy to get some of the high schoolers work on this.
Any other questions, challenges? Yes, Olivia?
Is there an opportunity to start a discussion about diversity in the community amidst this larger activity?
Absolutely. As I've shared with Don and Flo, the work I do now in Washington, about probably 60% of my time is spent on the race issue and the bias. For a fact, I was in a meeting all day on Tuesday, my organization set up a race crime advisory board with all the national organizations that have a stake in that. And I, I'm a firm believer that if we're going to be, if we're going to be a viable community, there has to be diversity here, and we have to be accepting of everybody around us and not pigeonhole people into holes. And again, I don't want to get too far into the Mrs. Jones case, but when people get marginalized and they feel like they're marginalized, that's not good social fiber in a community. No one should feel marginalized in their own community. So again, I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with you about this afterwards. Matt?
So just to follow up on your comment about students and the local youth, I mean, potentially they're the future of our town and the greater community, right?
Right over here.
Exactly, right? Okay. So, and I see there's a pretty good population of students here today, and I think that's great. So will there be opportunities for them to get involved in some of the individual groups?
Absolutely. It's all original mine, although we'd love to have the Boy Scouts involved. I don't want to give any credit to Rich, I want to give it to you.
I was going to discuss what we're talking about.
Absolutely.
Will there be committees for the Boy Scouts, Lions Club, Garden Club, whatever, you know, to get involved?
Yeah, and so some of the stuff we haven't had a chance to do that's really inventory of what the other clubs are doing, to figure out how we can, you know, again, we're struggling for members in every one of these clubs, how can we help them figure out a way to energize that focus? Because I'm a firm believer, going back to Project Vision, well, one of the, one of the most powerful things we did, you're going to say this is crazy, is if you've ever come in from the west side of Rutland into the city, it was a real bloodied area, and we collected funds and planted apple crab trees, landscaping, and that's a huge piece, it's a huge piece. So again, I would love to talk to the Boy Scouts about projects like that, Matt. Other questions? Yes, man?
I wondered if we could have a, like, one day a year, and all the people in Arlington can meet their life.
Like a cokehouse?
Yeah.
So, are you a mind reader? Are you a mind reader? So one of my, one of my prouder moments in Rutland was, and this is continued after I left, is the police department organized a block party where we held it in front of one of the known drug dealers' houses. And we held the community block party. And again, when you talk about environment matters, place matters, my experience is that you may not be able to change the stripes on a zebra, but you can change the environment they live in. And they're going to have to either adjust or move on. So I'm talking about that when it comes to the criminal element, but I also think what we found as a result of doing that, it was one of the smartest things we ever did, and the churches in the community donated the food, you know, and I worked behind the grill cooking hamburgers and hot dogs. What we really found out is people came out and said, they didn't even know who their neighbor next door was. And they got to know them for the first time. And so those are the kind of things that I think are very powerful in the community. And so you are reading my mind, and hopefully we can do something like that. You know, community-wide holiday celebrations, right? And the importance of getting to know your neighbor. Yes, man?
Terrace Week, educator in this district for about 30 years, I was Kate's teacher. She turned out okay.
Well, what we really want to know is, what were her marks?
You know, I can't remember, I'm too old.
You can ask Kate.
But I always see kids that I feel fall through the cracks, and is there a way to get them in a program or get their interest, something to help them develop and become good members of the community?
Absolutely. So, because I, I don't know that much about it, and I really, if I did, I shouldn't be talking about it. But I think the reason why this resonated with me when Flo Bellmapp and Don Keen went close to me about this was Mrs. Jones's homicide, right? If convicted of that, he would be an example of somebody who fell through the cracks. And the result of that downstream was devastating, and devastating to the community, and so it's going to be much wiser, and so Kate's very involved with the early stages of this working group, so just taking a look at the health center and the mental health services they're providing there. We can't kid ourselves here in Arlington that we're not, in my current job, as you go around the country and you talk to police chiefs, what's the number one problem you have? What do you think the answer is? Mental health issues. Police departments have become, police departments have become crisis workers for mental health cases. And so the health center is so important because having that collaboration and figuring out how to build that strength around that, you're not going to catch every kid, right? But the tighter the safety net, the better the chances that one of those kids don't fall through. And again, I will follow a model to a smaller scale that we put in place in Rutland, we will do the same thing here. Yes?
Hi, my name is Nikki, Nikki Feagle. I don't really talk much. But I, so two years ago, a small group of family members started 4H here in town. We're still really new. I am one of the only three groups that does 4H in Bennington County, and I've been working very closely with the Bennington County educator. But I just wanted to say that 4H is present here in Arlington and trying to grow.
So now here, I'm volunteering for the rec community? Is that what I heard? Did I hear that? All right. We've got a volunteer on the rec community, no, sorry, sorry. When we say rec community, we're not just saying somebody can kick a soccer ball, we're talking about, I've had a conversation with Amy Cables from the Community Center about how we can expand those type of youth programs, and 4H, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. You know, I know there's Girl Scout leaders here in the room, where's Elizabeth, Elizabeth, where are we at, sorry? Right? Struggle to keep numbers up sometimes. And so I would love to chat with you after about that.
Rich Mataloni, I moved Arlington about 23 years ago. I too have seen the depletion of our small stores and things like that, the IGA, Candle Mill Shops, things like that. My own stepchild left the community, came back to the community, there was no work for him. And so many young people, I think, are going to school outside of the state and finding that there's life beyond Arlington, and they're not coming back. I am appalled at how many homes I see for sale that there aren't any children in. I mean, the children are our future in this community.
So what you described...
Is there, is there anything going to be looked at for spurring on business, employment?
Absolutely. So again, what you just described is the story all over Vermont, except for certain pockets, right?
I worked in Jindin County until two months ago, and from Middlebury North, it's an entire state.
Totally different world, that's right. Bulldozer's moving all the time. So what's underneath that, right? What's underneath that, again, you may not see the opportunity for us to embrace arts as a way to generate revenue, but it is, because the conversations that are going on are big conversations. Dr. Josh Sherman, who purchased the East Arlington, you know, his full-time life is a nursery room doc, I'm sure you folks know, he has a vision for the arts in this town that's mine by me. Every time I sit down with him, I just shake my head, I don't know how he has time to think about it. So you say to yourself, what's that going to do? Well, if there's a child in the high school who maybe struggles a little bit in the everyday but has a real love for the arts, wouldn't it be cool for a mentor from Broadway, who Josh has contacts with, who his vision is that they would have practice facilities here in Arlington, Vermont, who would stay at the West Mountain Inn or the Arlington Inn or out at West Arlington? When you start talking about generating revenue, those are the revenues that are going to get generated and reinvested. So a bakery opens up, a coffee shop opens up, that's the vision. And I'll tell you, you know, as when Don Flo and I talk about this, I can get rather passionate at times, and I'm not predicting what the future will be, but when you, one thing that you said that really resonates with me is the number for sale signs, right? And so come out of our water, before I'm done with this effort working with the community, my goal would be to have less for sale signs and more people occupying those houses that are paying into our grant list, that are supporting our community with businesses that are spinning off as a result of that. But I'll say this again, and I'm, you know, I'm probably going to run the risk of telling me this is my last day doing this, but Don Kendall's in the room, and I know Don doesn't like being called out, but Flo works for him, I know. So Don Kendall's an example. That's the sixth largest employer in the state of Vermont. I'll say it again, the sixth largest employer in the state of Vermont. Here's an example of what I talk about, and I, please don't take this wrong when I say it, I know for a fact from talking to Flo, they have a hard time finding people who work there, okay? And so that has a whole nother social layer to it that is going to be very difficult to deal with, because we are now in Arlington up against all the other pressures of the world and the country when it comes to social issues and how we're going to deal with those, and how you're going to mitigate those, and how you're going to be able to grow your community. And I know you guys see it on the rescue squad, you see it all the time. Who would have thought you're carrying Narcan in your analysis? But you are. And who would have thought you'd be deploying Narcan? But you are. And so the fact of the matter is, these social pressures, we have to figure out a way to make Arlington strong enough that we can help the ones that fall down get picked up and help the ones that are, and recognize the folks that made huge contributions. And again, you know, Mac molding is a big part of this community. And when I met with Keith, I said, just envision, driving up East Arlington, we lost the bank, just imagine driving up East Arlington Road and Mac can't survive and they close their plant on East Arlington Road. Or you drive up a little bit farther because of what's going on, the schools, the school closes. Just envision that for a minute. And so that's what drove me to come back. And so I hear your point, those are big challenges, but I think it starts at the local level, and that's the other reason why I came back, because I think the bigger, biggest difference can be happened right here at this level here. Sir?
Has there any thought been given to apprenticeship programs between the schools and the local businesses?
You're a, you're a mind reader too? Look, there's a very healthy conversation going on with Nicole, Basic, the superintendent, about that very point. So here's, you're starting to tie together what we're talking about, right? We have the sixth largest employer in the state of Vermont here, who's heavy on STEM-type work, right? Technology, manufacturing, takes a lot of math to figure out how to make a plastics mold, right? So some of our conversations have been around, how do we create those apprenticeships? And how do we take valuable asset like Mac molding or one of the other manufacturers in town? Because as negative as we are, when you think of about a town of 2,500, we have a substantial number of employers here. We have a substantial amount of manufacturing here. I know while holidays are here, HPH Stains has been here for a long time. How do you take coursework here at the school, merge that together with, say, an internship or a STEM program based out of Mac molding, or an academy for the arts based out of, out of the work that Dr. Josh Sherman's doing up in East Arlington? Those are the visionary things we're talking about. No promises, but we think, we think with the people we have around the table that we're going to make a dent in, and that's one of the very ideas we're exploring. Yes, man?
So my name is Lori Blubber, and I'm probably the newest resident, one of the newest residents here in Arlington. I moved here five months ago, so I was one of those people who took a for-sale sign down.
So let me ask you why you moved out?
Well, I moved from Florida.
They moved.
Yeah. And I had a certain criteria that I was looking for, and I loved Arlington. And my first thought was moving into Manchester, I thought, eh, you know, that house could be anywhere. And so I was very fortunate to move right across the road from the Kellins, who's been a wonderful resource.
Well, you're fortunate, it's perilous.
Yeah. And so my question is, because I, you know, I'm really new, so this is my first meeting of any.
Thank you for coming to this, I mean, five months into living here.
Well, I'm starting to get settled now. Yeah, I hope so. So now I'm really going to stay. But my question is, you talked about contacting Robin for volunteering and so forth, who's going to coordinate that? I mean, is she going to do that? Is she going to...
Eventually, eventually, once I get Sullivan back in, I will be doing that coordination.
Okay.
That would be part of my...
Because someone had mentioned a little bit earlier not to lose the momentum.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking that it would be maybe helpful to have somebody to coordinate, at least put the groups of people together and say, okay, here you go, you have somebody contacting people.
So I don't want to make it sound like nothing's going to happen from now until January, because the world doesn't revolve around me. No, seriously, for a minute. The world revolves around who we get fired up and the community comes to the table. So I think, again, and I got to make this clear, I am engaged in this now, it's just that I can't give it my full attention, but I do return phone calls at 8:30, 9 o'clock at night to people back home when I'm... at night to people back home when I'm at my apartment in D.C. So it isn't like it's going to stand still, so please be clear on that. It's just that it's not, and I said this to Don Flo this morning, I wish it moved faster than we moved already. But we've accomplished a lot in two months here. We really have. And so don't take my comments like things are going to stop. It's just that you need to be patient. If you're trying to reach out for me, you need to be patient for me to get back to you.
Jim, would you be hopeful just to mention those committees?
Again?
One more time?
Yeah, yeah. So, no, no, Kate's your, Kate's your... No, you know, I made this comment about being old, and now she's going to take me back to have to remember. So it's, I'll go backwards. It's public safety, the history of arts and, and music in our community, economic development, the rec park, town government, and schools. Yes, Don?
The follow-up on Lori's point, things are already happening with Florence and I coordinating and bringing people together. The arts over in, what, East Arlington, the, an ad hoc committee over there is meeting now with an ad hoc committee over in West Arlington, where the Rockwell background is, and of course, next year it's going to be a major play in, in America where the Four Freedoms, the paintings that were done here in Arlington are going to go on national and international tour next year. And wouldn't it be great if that kickoff for that national tour could begin right here in Arlington? It goes back to pride, but here again, the group, the arts part of this group, the nucleus of that is already underway. Someone had a question about the rec park. I think it's up on the top there. There's another family who's provided us with a white paper on providing to the rec park a squash court and a whole squash program for Arlington. There are part-time residents here in Arlington, they come up, I believe, on weekends and in the summer, but they have provided this steering committee that Jim, Florence, and I are on with the white paper on how to provide the rec park with a squash court. So things are underway, and, and we're going to see even more. So even though Jim won't be back full-time till January, right, things are moving along on.
Right, Jim?
Yes, absolutely. The conversation's going on. Mary Ann?
Well, and maybe I would just say that from my point of view, Arlington has never lost its shine. I mean, you know, we came here 40 years ago, and I love being in this community. And so I'm trying to, rather than feeling like there's an apathy here, I don't think there's an apathy here.
I agree.
And rather than feeling, just as you were talking about, Jim, don't use negative kind of thinking about what's happening. What we're looking at is people interested in doing more. And I think that's wonderful. But I don't, I think the bedrock is totally here and has been here the whole time I've been here.
Mary Ann, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you at all. I think the point about us using those terms was to drive home, I have heard the conversations, Don's heard the conversations. The conversations have gone on about our educational system. I mean, so we're not, what we're trying to do today, September 22nd, 2017, is stop that conversation by pointing out to people that we have a lot to work with here, and it's mad we're bringing people together. The other thing I would say to you, Mary Ann, is that, and again, please don't take this like it's argumentative tone, but what I went into, well, one of the things I heard all the time is, oh, we don't have an aeroplane, it's no worse than anywhere else. And if you acknowledge what your issues are, you're never going to be able to fix them. And so when Don and Flo came to me and asked me about this, I've been pretty adamant with them in every conversation we've had. If we don't acknowledge where our weaknesses are, you can't fix your weaknesses. So I don't, I agree with you 100%, but I do think we have to be very candid with ourselves and honest about where our weaknesses are, because you're not going to fix those weaknesses permanently if you don't. And then I'm preaching to the choir, you've been, you've been in government service for a long time, I think you know. You got to acknowledge what your issues are. I feel the same way you do, but I think it would be not accurate to say that everybody in town felt the same way. And the goal for me is not to walk out into the, out to Wayside, have a cup of coffee, I want to hear people talking about the energy that's in town, not the negative that's in there. That's my view.
I know. Well, it's just, it's interesting, Lori was there to have met her on the Keelands trails with the dogs, and she chose Arlington over other places. And I've met the man that's now putting a garage in in the first Rockwell house, and he came here because he was excited about, you know, what Arlington had to give. So I'm trying to just kind of bounce off of new people who are here who think it's a pretty, pretty exceptional town.
Absolutely. Build up. You, ma'am, did you say Lori?
Lori.
Lori, that's pretty good, I got the first word. My wife's very impressive, I got the first word. You remind me of a, of an outstanding woman who was in Rawlin when I was there, her name was Gab Johnson, and she moved from Wash, she couldn't move anywhere. She moved into one of the toughest neighborhoods in Rawlin because she felt the energy that was happening, so I call you golf for that. I think that's the kind of stories, Mary Ann, going back to your point too, but how many people in town know that? Right? And that's where the synergy comes from. We've talked about this. God, God forgive me when I get back here, but I swore I'm going to set up a Twitter, I have a Twitter account now, I'm a stalker, but I don't tweet, but, but those kind of messages need to be spread because that's the energy that builds up, right? Hey, Lori's coming to town because she could have went anywhere. We're glad you got out of Florida. Matt?
I just wanted to point out one positive thing, and to tack on to what Mary Ann was saying, there's a reason why a good number of our state troopers have chosen Arlington to settle down and raise their families and be involved in all the sports programs. You know, kudos to Todd and Jamie Wright and Travis Hess, you know, all those state troopers that are here in the community, their kids are here, but they're also very, a big part of the sports programs.
What, Matt, can I just go on that for a minute? Because I think Flo, Don, I talked about this too. You know, not, not for the sake to embarrass Todd, but, you know, Todd spent a great deal of time at my house growing up, and he, he was influenced by John Warner, he was influenced by other people in town. Travis Hess the same way, right? Stayed here. But I think it's the story that we're trying, the positive story we're trying to tell about what is so good and why it's so important that John Warner, Jim Baker gives back to their community? Because it's about Kate Bryant, Penal Day, Todd Wilkins, and I, and I think that's part of what we're trying to recapture. We're not trying to be negative about it. But I'll say it again, if you don't acknowledge where your shortcomings are, I don't believe you can fix. You can feel good about it, but it's, I kind of, you know, to kind of put this in real basic police terms, it's kind of like drinking a light beer, tastes good but less filling. And it's, it's about really putting that social fiber deep into the ground. That, that's the history of the town. My good, my good friend, Mrs. Shorn.
When we walked away side 33 some years ago, we had locals and we had tourists. Now we have locals, tourists, and second homeowners. And in your communication efforts, I would hope that you would find a way to communicate with the people who are not here day to day, but have a great interest in the community because they chose to come here, even if it's a second homeowner, but they have talent and they have financial resources and they have connections. And if we leave them out of our communication circle, we're missing a great opportunity. So I would like that.
Yeah, thank you for that, because, in fact, I think this is an example of what, what you're saying is that, that Don, through his contacts, brought some folks to the table that were originally second homeowners, some of them are here now full-time, but there's a talent pool there that's incredible, that, you know, I think of Mr. Cooper, Don, who's here at part-time, travels the world, was a world financer. I mean, he's willing to contribute to the effort. And so your point is very well taken. Thank you for reminding us of that. Clint?
Just one last thing.
One last, one last ad for you.
One last.
One last ad for you.
I just want to say, some of us have waited a long time for you to come along, and Don Keelen and others to come along, and say what we felt, you know, 20 years ago when I came here, there were, I think, a neighborhood of nine or 10 inns. Now there's about four or five. And my daughter went to school here, she went to school and left because there was no work for her here. And on a personal level, I just want to say that I'm 100% with you, and whatever you need, my resources, my abilities, and whatever I can offer, I'm looking forward to making a difference here and seeing how it can be what, what I came to, and everyone's talking about. Arlington's an amazing town. And I've been all over the country, and I've seen places everywhere, there's nothing like this here. I mean, we have opportunity that no one else has. So, you know, and for example, if you need a website built, I'll make a couple of phone calls of people that build mine, and I can have your website by the end of the day or tomorrow's. You know, whatever, whatever.
But what I would like to do with that, what I would like to see under that, is that we still get a couple of students involved in that process, and they have investment in the town, they have investment and energy around the town, right? And so, and then someone to maintain it, because the last thing you want me to do is to take a website. Yes? So we'll, we'll follow up on that, okay?
Jim, if I may?
Yes?
I think to follow up on that, Clint, too, if we just look around the room today and we hear about, you know, Mr. Kendall being here as the owner of the sixth biggest employer in the state of Vermont, to stay-at-home moms, to business owners, to working parents, grandparents, this is the first step, and I'm pretty impressed and pretty proud to be in a room with so many people who are willing to make this a priority. So thank you all for being here, and I'm honored to be one of yours as a daughter of Arlington, and I look forward to working with each of you in the ways that we can move you forward.
Thank you, too. Any other questions, comments, challenges? Look, I'll end this by saying, as I said earlier, Don asked if I thought what would be successful. This is success, Don. Be patient with us, but if you've got ideas, please bring them forward. I will figure out a way. My phone number is in the book at home, and I'll volunteer, another volunteer to a committee will be the answering service for Jim Baker, my wife. Not home, 9334-375-9334. My cell number is 733-1055. That's used a lot, and I get a lot of messages on that, but I'll try to call back as soon as I can. There's no other questions, comments. Thanks for being here. It means a lot, the effort that's going on. Thank you.